Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Troy Como.
In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our health, our family, and our friends. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting and guide us as we serve the people of our community. Lord, we pray that you continue to bless our city, our state, and our nation. We pray that you protect our troops and our first responders. For this, we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to their honor for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protier, Ricky LaSala, Councilmember Brooke Marcott.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White, Councilmember Troy Como.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Doyle.
Here. Thank you. Item one, public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
We have no comment cards tonight. Okay. At this time, please put your phone on silent. Move on. Item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of January 23, 2025, which will be published on January 29, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, is there any discussion on our minutes of the January 23 meeting? Hearing seen none. Vote your machines. Thank you. 3A.
Representatives of the Garen Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation to provide an update on the teen court program.
Good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tyra McWhorter. I am the executive director of the Garen Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation, and I'm also the director of the teen court. I have some members of the teen court with me. We've been doing teen court since 2021. These kids give me they all. They're very dedicated. They're very opinionated. They're trained by one of the best lawyers coming out of New Iberia that would be graduating in May of this year from the Thurgood Marshall School of Law, and that's my daughter Tatiana. They prefer her better than me because she gets them right, and they learn. So I'm gonna let them speak tonight. Y'all hear from me all the time. I'm gonna let them talk. Two of them, I call them my OGs. They've been with me since 2021. One of them is my boss, but he'll be the first one to speak.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Carson Malet. I am a sophomore at Lowerville High School. I've been in the teen court program since its beginning. These two gentlemen behind me are going to speak to you about a program that teen court is trying to start, but before they get to that, I would like to just explain the basis of the program to y'all, just so y'all can all get a grasp. Teen Court was started in 2021 as an idea to help teens not have things on their public record as they grow up. So what happens is if they commit a crime, a misdemeanor, they, once they get arrested, they get charged, they then go get put into the court system. They and their parents, it's up to their discretion, can choose to come to the teen court program. They come to the teen court program, we then have a sentencing. The trials are not ever guilt or innocence. It is always sentencing. Once they completed their sentences, their record is expunged. That charge is off their record. And that is basically the job of the teen court program, and that is what the teen court program set out to do and has accomplished.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeremy Diaz, and I'm a junior at NISH. I have been in this teen court program for four years, almost as much as him, and primarily serving as a defense attorney for those that go through the program to get those misdemeanors off their record. Many of these cases that I serve in directly involve in some way, shape, or form, somebody who was involved with the vape, whether they were holding it, using it, whatever. Obviously proves this is a major problem in our schools, as, you know, it's the big bulk of the cases. So what we want to do is start a program that will hopefully sort of talk these kids out of using these vapes. And not only will we do this by presenting the facts about vaping, you know, everything that you hear, but also to prevent some, to talk about social effects about vaping that some of these kids that by using these will experience at some point in their lives.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Chambers. I go to Lowerville High School. As my friend Jeremy just said, vaping is a huge problem. Now, I've been in teen court for two years, and honestly, most of the cases we get involve some form of vape. So we need to solve this problem, and in order to do that, kids in their household, everyone has their rights. That's a main foundation of America. So their parents vape. And whenever you see your parents do something, everyone loves their parents. So whenever they see their parents vape, smoke, anything, they subconsciously think that it's okay to do that. So whenever they're offered a vape, they take it. Now, we can't limit parents having vapes because it's their rights, but we can encourage them to not do it in front of their children or show them how much it causes to their child. Another way we could do this is by informing. Now, we already inform people by going to high schools or middle schools and giving them a presentation. But at that point, sadly enough, they are already exposed to vaping. So in hopes that someone like low elementary, like a kindergartner, has not yet been exposed to vaping, if we show them how bad this is, although they may not understand it, they might understand a little bit of it. And if they understand any form of this, they may have some facts ahead. So whenever a person comes up to them and says, "Do you want to hit?", they will say, "No, thank you."
Y'all could tell these are my defense attorneys. They will let again. Now, also, didn't introduce Mr. Trey Barlow. He's also, he's my mentor, my outreach, my truancy officer. We have like 10 titles at our job. So we thank y'all. Do you have any questions or anything?
Questions, comments?
Okay.
Go ahead, Ron. Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'm just curious. What is the hype about vaping?
Um, I don't know if it's a hype, but the kids, they do tell you why they do it, whether it calms them. That's the biggest thing. They say, "Oh, it calms me." But we need to, my thing to them, you're still too young. You can't do it. It may calm you. So we try to find other ways to teach them how to calm themselves.
Got some answers coming.
You got an answer? Okay.
Sorry. I have friends, and it's sad. I play football for Lowerville, and people vape a lot. From what I see, I have never vaped. And but what, from what I see, as Ms. Tyra had said, it calms them. And whenever you're growing up, hitting puberty in high school, everything's changing. The world's spinning. You're not on your feet anymore. So you want some sort of calming reaction. Now, vape, as the people who have come to my school to inform me, it lets the brain have a dopamine hit because of what it contains in it. Now, once this happens, we love it so much that we want it again. So whenever we can't get it again and again, because as our tolerance goes up, they need more of it. So it becomes a problem. Instead of just hitting it once, as people do at the start, it becomes more of a problem, and more people do it because they need more of it. So any more questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On the, on the program y'all have, what is the percentage of the kids that come in there with the problems of, is it vaping? Or what's the most percentage with the kids that y'all getting coming in that program?
So I don't have the statistics.
Okay.
But I would assume about 30 to 40% of cases, which may not sound like a lot, but we get five cases a session. So at least one case a session is about vaping.
Okay.
Compared to other things, like we get barely any cases about marijuana unless it's in a vape.
Mm-hmm. Another thing is how long the process is when they come into the program for them to be able to get out and to be able to have their record expunged? What's the time limit on that?
Because they deal with that part, I deal with the part you're asking. That's the beauty of it. They get to sentence them, then I get to work with them.
Right, right.
So it all depends on how much, they might be beginners.
Okay.
Or there might be some that really into it. So we started a substance abuse class with them, and we go through them to get them to try to get another taste for it. So that's what we've been working with. So it could be up to six months, up to a year, depending on the kid.
All right. I got you. That's, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, we work with them, because some of them might come in for truancy or theft. And then talking to them and assessment, we learn about they have a habit.
Right.
Work with that as well.
Another thing, do y'all work with them as far as trying to be able to find jobs and different things like that?
Yes, Mr. Trey, I'm throwing Mr. Trey in there. We try to educate them and get them to the next level, whether it's education, job training, or something, college.
Right.
We taking a college tour next month. So we do as much as we can with them.
That's what I want to hear, because if you're doing what y'all doing, y'all doing a great job, that should be something the next level. Trying to get a job, or if they're going to college, or whatever, you know, to try to keep them on the right path, you know? Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thanks for what you do, and I really like this format. Bring in, bring in, you know, kids who are involved, letting them speak. I think that's, that's cool. Thank you. Thanks for what y'all do.
Thank you all.
All right, Madam Clerk, 4A.
Ordinance number 202435, in ordinance amending and reenacting Section 74, Article 3 of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances related to excavations on public property.
This is to protect our roads and know who's working where. I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and Councilman Dan Doyle, is there anybody from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, thank you very much. Now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott?
Main motion.
I need a second. Councilman Ron Davis, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I have one. I was looking at the penalty of this, and it's only $50.
Right.
Think that's enough?
We can jack it up.
I mean, $50, I would do it and just pay the fine.
And you're right, people might do that.
I, I was just wondering how, you know, because you look at the, what they needed for insurance and all that stuff, you know, it's, it's pretty good. But I just think $50, I, I just.
And we can amend that. I mean, that's, that's why we're here, you know? Want to make it 500 and get them to really stop messing with our roads? I'm not gonna tell you a figure, but I agree that we can make it higher.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we can always change it, but I would like to go up a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
To let them know we serious about it, not.
I, I agree.
I don't want to break them, but I think, you know, $250, and if they keep doing it, and we can come back and amend. That just, I would like to make a substitute motion to bring it to 250 for the penalty, depending what the council members want to do.
I think it's a good idea, 250.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott?
Yes. I'll second his motion to amend it.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend on the floor by Councilman Dan Doyle to go from 50 to 250, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. We would need to vote, so.
Yes.
Oh, wait, you have a question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I was, I was agreeing with what you had said. I wasn't thinking going that high, but I do agree with it. But if y'all want to agree on 250, I was thinking about a hundred dollars, but 250 is fine if y'all want to do that.
Yes, sir.
These are gonna be businesses, probably.
Yeah, 250 is not much to a business.
Right.
And it's up to.
Yeah, okay.
It's up to.
Up to 250.
All right. Any other discussion for, ask for a vote? No? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines on the amendment. Great. So now we're back to a motion that has been amended. So any discussion on the main motion that, or further discussion? Everybody good?
Yeah.
And please vote your machines. Wait, do I need a?
Make a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion and a second again.
Yeah, to make it.
So I have a.
Except amended motion to the fine.
I have a motion by Councilman Dan Doyle and a second by Councilman David Merrill. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. 4B.
Special Ordinance Number 2024202506, in ordinance amending the budget to carry over funds from the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
This is the Headworks and Pepperplex Act 170 for limestone, and this all came up at the last meeting. So do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Troy Como and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and Councilman Troy Como. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Move.
Councilman Troy Como.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis. Good. Is there any discussion on this motion? Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4C. Oh, wait. Councilman Davis?
Yeah.
Vote your machine.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Good. No, no big deal. All right, 4C.
Special Ordinance Number 2024202507, in ordinance amending the budget to provide for the purchase of barricades.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill, Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, any discussion from the public? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, Councilman David Merrill, now we move on to the main motion. I need one.
Motion.
Councilman Ron Davis and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, any discussion? This is to purchase barricades. We are going to slowly work our way up to have an arsenal of parade barricades. If you attended the Mardi Gras Parade, it was the biggest crowd we've had for any parade ever. It was really wild. It was great to see that many people out. We had no incidents, but, you know, you can make the case that we definitely need those barricades. So this is the first of many purchases of barricades.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How many barricades would that be we, we could purchase?
Said 200.
It said 200.
Well, we gonna buy a total of 200, but this is.
That's not 200.
No.
About 60, I think.
This was, I'm trying to think. Madam Clerk, can you remember? We were talking about that earlier. We broke it into two purchases. So we're gonna buy about 200. This one was 60 maybe?
I think it was 60.
And how many we have now that we all? Not nearly enough. Our problem is when public works are busy and utilizing them, and the PD has theirs out, we probably have 40 to add to the parade.
Right.
You know, we don't have enough.
But they all match. They could be the same.
Yeah, they all match, same manufacturer. We tried somebody that was cheaper. We got one sample. It was terrible. We, we not going that route. But we need them to interlock. We need the same kind of barricade, so they are the same. And we need 400 to do the parade route like we would like to do, and not quite all of it, the major areas that are congested. We would need, oh my God, we would need 1,000 to do the whole parade route.
Mayor, we, we talk about the safety of the kids and families or anybody.
Yeah.
Because I, I drove, and it was, I had to stop a lot.
They are, they swell the road.
You don't think there's a grant out there for, for this?
I've been looking, and we haven't found one yet. No? Believe me, if I can, I'm gonna jump on it, because this is expensive, but I mean, we need it.
Yeah. One thing you say, I was there too. My granddaughter was in there dancing. But I noticed that here, they do it in New Orleans and other places. They got too many people be coming in the street.
Well, that's why we're gonna put the barricade.
But, yeah, but they, man, they just like.
You know what to tell us. Believe me, I've been in.
They get excited.
We brought back the Halloween parade. I've been in parades. It, it's, I mean, they swell the street, and I mean, you throw in candy, or you're at the back of a truck, and, you know, a five-year-old's tapping you on the leg. I mean, it's, it's, it wakes you up quick that we got issues. And when you drive, I've pull floats, and when you drive, you really are conscious, you know, you're not doing anything else except driving, and you see how much our paradegoers get, are in the streets, so that's the point of this. You know, we're not a big city like Lafayette or New Orleans or Baton Rouge that has more money and more workers. I'm not only concerned with the money to buy the barricades, it's gonna be a lot of work to put them out. I'm getting up, they don't know it yet, but I mean, public works is not gonna be able to handle it by themselves. I'm getting up with the PD. I'm getting up with the fire department. I mean, it is gonna take a real joint effort before a parade because we're gonna have so many to put out.
Another question, the beads. Are they allowed to throw the beads? Because I heard last year, they wasn't, they, they say they're not allowed to throw the beads like they was doing before.
Well, every parade, you know, throws beads. I think we can. I think we can. I think we can. And certainly, once we have our barricades, you know, that'll cover a whole multitude of things.
We do, not to be allowed, we do have liability on the floats and everything.
Oh, yeah, and every parade has liability insurance, every parade, you know? And look, these parades, you know, I know I'm off topic, but these parades, people pay for cleanup, people pay for security. It's all these groups, private groups that put the parades on, and so they are, it's not all tax dollars. It's, it's, it's a lot of private investment, which without them, we wouldn't have these, you know, events.
And I drove last year too, in the parade, and for Chicago Candy Fest Parade. And they was telling the people that was on the float, they wasn't really allowed to be throwing the beads at people like that. They supposed to let them come up towards the thing and get beads or whatever. I don't know.
I think that's worse.
That's what they say.
It's worse, because you're gonna have little kids that are, you know.
Right.
Take them to somebody who's short. You're gonna have little kids that are coming up, and, you know, that, that to me, it's better. It's better to get them away from the traffic.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any enforcements for going around barricades or moving them?
One step at a time, sir, but we probably would have to put something in place, because we don't have, we've never had barricades in parade. So one step at a time, but I do think our officers will certainly be instructed, you know, to get people back behind the barricade. And I think the first few parades are gonna be a real learning experience.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying that I want to throw the book at people at the beginning, but this council can pass some legislation if we think we need, if people listen, we won't have to.
Yeah, just so they'll be respected and they'll know.
We'll just have to kind of test it. I think the other thing is gonna be, the focus is gonna be on all of us to get the word out. Can't just show up and throw these barricades up the day, two days before the parade, and all of a sudden, you know, think people know what to do or not do, because we've never had them. So we'll have to do a good outreach of making people understand they gotta stay behind the barricade.
Yeah.
Mayor, not to be out, but this, this parade, this Mardi Gras Association, they did have people walking on the side, stopping.
I saw that. And some of the dance groups did too, which that was pretty much.
There was a great crowd, I'm gonna tell you.
Oh, yeah, it's the biggest crowd.
There's a lot of people out there.
Ask my officers.
It was really a great, and they did a great job. Not to change the subject, but they did a great job. I mean, cleanup after, cleanup in park.
Cleanup was the biggest cleanup we've ever done.
It was pretty impressive.
I mean, I was out there the whole time, and it, it was impressive.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion on our barricades? Everybody good? And we went through all the steps and the motions. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4D.
Special Ordinance Number 2024202508, in ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for economic development at the Pepperplex.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, thank y'all. Anybody here to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to wrap it up.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and Councilman Troy Como. Now I need a main motion. Councilman Dan Doyle.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor, is that the money to put that pipe for the road? Nope?
This is the money for a future economic development opportunity. And we kind of have to leave it like that.
Okay, cool.
So we have a big box interested.
Yeah.
This is to line up funds from, as we talked about last time, from our Tiff district to incentivize. But at this time, I can't say who the company is, and that's just how I work sometimes.
I, we talked about one time about Pepperplex getting that money. I think it was 400,000 for that road to.
Yes, that we did.
Yeah.
And we have a budget of 400 for that.
Yeah, that's.
That will have to go to public bid, but that's, that's another one that's coming. Actually, I talked to our engineer about that one today.
Cool, thank you.
But anyway, so at this point, and soon, you know, I can remember, I cheated a little bit then. I can remember when I couldn't say Chick-fil-A was coming, so I said it was a chicken place that didn't open on Sunday. Okay, but, you know, this time, they tightened me up a little bit more, so I really can't say anything. And we won't, if they don't come, this money will not be utilized, in other words. And as soon as I can make an announcement, believe me, I want to.
Cool, thank you.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 4E.
Ordinance Number 202502, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with Lard Oil Company for off-site fuel cars.
This is, we had to bid out our fuel, and so we put it on the six-month bid, and they are the bidder, so that's what this is about. So I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, is there anyone from the public to discuss this, comment? No one from the public. I need a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcott.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis. Now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Councilman Ron Davis, and I think Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Is there any discussion on the main motion? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Ooh, item 5A.
Resolution Number 2507, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Section 179D Energy-Efficient Commercial Buildings Deduction Allocation Form on behalf of Paul J. Arland, Architect, APAC.
I have Paul to explain it, but before that, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Councilman David Merrill, second. Councilman Ron Davis, and Paul, you're here to explain what's going on.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Every year, we have our tax planning meeting, as most businesses do with our accountants. Bruce Art Pochy, Lewis &amp; Bro, and Craig Viatour is our representative of the firm, called us to the attention of this program called 179D Energy-Efficient Commercial Building Deduction Program. And so we, we kind of had a discussion with Craig, who had a consultant out of Houston, Texas called the Alliance Group. The Alliance Group specializes in doing an analysis for each firm to determine, or each company to determine what kind of deductible credits are available. The U.S. Congress in 2005 created the 179D Act, so the Internal Revenue Code. And in 19, in 2020, it was revised. So what it does is they're trying to incentivize professionals in the field of design and architecture to design buildings that are energy efficient. They're trying to reduce costs on energy. So what they're trying to do is incentivize those firms that are involved in, in design of buildings. And primarily, you'll see these buildings are renovations to existing buildings. So it's an opportunity to increase energy efficiency of a building, whether it deals with the envelope of the building, the air conditioning system, or the lighting system on the building. Those are all characteristics that can be upgraded. And so what they, what this program does is they allocate the credit to a bill, to the particular project, to an entity, and this entity is the City of New Iberia. It's a public entity, but the public entity can't use it. They can pass it on to the design professional, and that's the way the act is established. So, but we'll, but we have to come forward and ask for, from the council, what's called an allocation letter, which allows this firm to be involved with us, be able to make a determination on what kind of deductions are out there and we can take advantage of as a firm. It's a very expensive process for us to put forth, to get this firm involved, and, and these guys do work all over the United States. This is just one firm, and there are multiple firms that do this. But, but the whole emphasis of this program is to encourage energy efficient, energy efficiency in commercial buildings. And we have a number of buildings we've worked on with the city. We are also working with Iberia Power School Board. We've done a number of projects for them. And so we have the same allocation letter that's gonna go before them. But we have five projects, the West End Community Center, the Bay Utes Museum, the New Iberia Police Department, the City Parks Community Center, and the West End Community Center. All, all work done on those qualify under this program for consideration. So it's just a request for y'all to provide an allocation to, to our firm to be able to find out if we qualify for these credits.
Yes, sir.
Is it the same, same thing, kind of like the school and some commercial buildings? Someone came in and made their lighting efficient, made things efficient, and it was really no cost to them.
We did that in this build. We did that in this build.
Same thing, kind of, or, right?
There are programs out there like that, Dan, to upgrade lighting. Sometimes you do it through a utility company, and sometimes they have, I guess, those grants that are out there. This is, I mean, this is to incentivize energy efficiency, but this is more through the IRS program, from what I understand. So, I mean, any project that we touch, whether it deals with an envelope, with a roofing system, a lighting system, or an air conditioning system, any one of those programs that we touch, this, this firm called Alliance Group goes and brings a group of engineers into every one of those sites and visits the sites and makes a determination on what did you do to the building? You have a start point and an end point, and how energy efficient did you, did you make that building? I'd like to come back and share that when we have that information. It's really good to look at, but it's, it's what the program is about. All the other programs out there, exactly what you're talking about, Dan. All the other programs out there, exactly what you're talking about, Dan.
Clicoe, Clicoe helped us with this.
Thank you, yeah.
I got a question too, like the qualifications, like you're saying about seeing if y'all get approved for that. If, if everything is, y'all using professional people and everything, like you say, underneath, you know, the people that's dealing with it, how would you not get approved for it?
Well, it's, well, it's, they, they, it's, it's about a certain dollar value they recognize based on, um, a per-square footage of the building. Certain things are done based on the per-square footage of the building, they run through calculations. You can get as much as $2.50 per square foot or $5.00 a square foot. In some cases, it may not be economically feasible for us to do that because economics have to work out.
Correct.
You're gonna pay a certain amount of money for this firm to do this, but at the end of the day, if you're not gonna get as much of an allocation, it's not worth the investment.
So the lower amount is not gonna really help you get qualified.
We gotta, you gotta find a soft spot.
Correct.
You know, that, that happy place.
I got you.
And it's, it's a quite an extensive process to go through. It's the first time we actually do it, we heard about the program several years ago, but, but we weren't, we didn't think we were eligible at the time. But since we've been involved with the school board and with the city, our accountant thinks that we are eligible at this time.
It's a good program, I, I read up on it, I didn't even know it existed either until I read into it, but it'd been around for a little while.
It has been, yes. And, you know, it, it takes a while for things to filter down to the design professional community. A lot of our professionals haven't heard about it, the construction industry, a contractor could take advantage of it too on a particular project. Uh, with the school board work, we might have fourteen different people involved in all of the different projects we've worked on, which is about seventeen different projects, and only ourselves and one other person has inquired. So it's kinda, I mean, it's out there, you just have to have, I guess, the right accountant.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Got one question. Um, I was looking at the buildings that, uh, you may have information on already. Say, for instance, the police department has been since 2022, okay? And then as of 2023, do y'all track the efficiency after you've done the work to see how, how much efficiency or percentage of, of, uh?
So what, so what, uh, Mr. Davis, what this does is, um, they go back and look at the past history of the past five years of buildings that you've worked on. I don't have that information right now. In other words, we're really starting anew, we've never done this before, and so.
But it will give us that.
We'll find out.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
We'll find out about that particular building and what kind of efficiencies they are. And for future reference, if future projects come up, it may be something that we will want to be involved in. Uh, so at this time, we don't have that information, but it should come out of the report. Yes.
I kinda expect you to say not, but you said you will bring that information back to the board.
I will, yeah, I'd love to share it with y'all.
Got his Clicoe hat on.
Hmm?
I said you got his Clicoe hat, but it's good, I mean, we, imagine getting that information. It's gonna be good to see for the dollars we spend, what kind of efficiency we pick up.
You see what economic efficiency that we'll get out of it.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
You too, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna have to scratch, uh, 5B. I'm gonna need a motion to pull it. We put a bid package together and our bid didn't follow the bid package. In other words, I, I might be changing the bid package, okay? And, and we're gonna be doing something different to acquire this because we need the marketing machine. But for today, following our procurement rules, we put the package out and they didn't bid, but the package said to bid. So with that, uh.
I'll make a motion to remove the item from the agenda.
Well, so are we gonna reject the bid because it came in to be, it came by, it came to us as a bid on a lease instead of.
Yeah, I asked to purchase this equipment.
Okay, okay.
And this world of marketing equipment, it seems to be that most people lease it, okay? So they turned in the bid to lease, but that's not what the bid document said. So I, I think that, uh, well, we might end up leasing, but I need to compare apples to apples. So what we think we have to do, unless, unless Jeff has a different idea, is pull the bid. Uh, I've asked the company to pull their bid, and so that's gonna happen, and then I'm gonna go out for proposals. Now I am interested now at maybe leasing, because after talking to them and the technology and everything else, the leasing might actually, I mean, you know, when you don't know, you don't know. The leasing might actually be a better, better way to go. So I'm gonna, it's under our dollar amount that I can get three quotes. So now what I'm gonna do, instead of another [bleep] public bid process, I'll get three quotes from three companies because it's under the threshold that we can do that. But I now I'm gonna get quotes to see what it would take to buy it, but I also wanna know what it would take to lease it. Because then, and if we had put purchase or lease, we didn't even realize that. We, our bid packet would have been okay, but you gotta bid where we ask you to bid. I mean, if the auditors pull that, I'm not gonna be exactly like I should. So that's kinda the reason for this, but we're not giving up on the marketing machine because we desperately need it. It's marking all the soccer fields, it'll mark everything, it's run by GIS, it's gonna save a whole lot of labor in hand, uh, marking everything, and it's much more accurate, accurate, you know, because of the, the GPS system.
Right.
So that's what I'll need to do, is pull it and start over, sir.
Yeah, I think, I think once we put it out there, we gotta deal with it. So I think we ought to reject it.
Okay.
Because it didn't comply with the specifications because we asked for one kind of proposal and they gave us another. So I think we reject it. Now, if we reject it, they have certain rights, due process and all that. But if they pull it, then, you know, we don't have to worry about that.
Well, I called them today and, I mean, just pulled my cards on the table and said, you didn't, you didn't do what I asked you to do. And he was a salesman, you know, after five minutes of sales talk, I, I, he said he was gonna pull it. Uh, and I think that's a smart thing to do because then I can start afresh, anew, and, and they'll have an opportunity.
Right. But if they, if they haven't pulled it yet, I'd reject it tonight.
Yeah, that's unusual.
And I don't know if he, I need a letter, I need something in writing that says they're pulling their bid, and the last time I checked, I, I didn't, I didn't have it.
It's unusual that he, you told him what you wanted to do and then they, they didn't tell you that, they just leased, that, uh, uh.
Right.
That don't make sense.
And they said a few people buy, most people lease, so they just bid leased, uh, so they just didn't meet the requirement. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm just checking my email real quick.
Yeah.
Nah, I don't see anything. Now, I can reject this proposal and they still can bid again because it's gonna be a new deal. That's what I thought.
I'll second.
Okay, do I have a motion? You might. You made a motion to reject? Okay, then I have a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and a second by Councilman Troy Como to reject the bid. Is there any further discussion? Then please vote your machines. Okay, so I don't need to amend anything we done. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Just making sure. Uh, now we move on to 6A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2025-03, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement bound between the City of New Iberia and Menville and Associates LLC for the administration of various grant projects and setting for public hearing on February 18th, 2025.
Mr. Richmondville handles a lot of our grants, all of our capital outlay, is a wealth of knowledge, and he's the man. He has cut back on what he does, I'm very thrilled that he wants to continue to work with us. And this is gonna give me the opportunity that as we see some grants or we see some additional capital outlay, having this in place, it, it doesn't make me stall. I can immediately say, Mr. Richard, get on it, because this guy is, is, he's the man. Anyway, so do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, and I need a second. Councilman Ron Davis, is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor, I got a question.
Yeah, sure.
When you apply for those grants, if they apply formally, we don't get them, we still have to pay them for that time of applying for a grant?
Sometime, yeah, sometime, no.
Okay.
I, 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 not all the time, but sometimes we do.
I know sometimes in the past, they would go for these grants and if they didn't get them, well, we didn't have to pay them.
Sometimes it's like that, and see, you know, I work on grants, Jane is the, you know, the, she does a whole lot of grants. And so Will Put, Laney and I have, have put a bunch of work in on grants. So a lot of them, we just put together in-house. But he is such a specialist of knowing what to do in Baton Rouge and how to do it. He's been doing it for years and years, so we can't compete with him. You know, would we have to have him? I guess we wouldn't, but would we get the money that we get from the state? We would not, I can pretty well tell you that.
I tell you, we, we're lucky that he's continued doing it.
I'm telling you, because he has scaled back.
He's scaled back a lot over the years, so we, we farted, I was just wondering.
I have a question to you.
And that's kinda why I want it quick, so that if I can catch him for something, I can hurry up and I don't, I don't lose the time to come back. Yes, sir.
Same thing, you answered my question when you asked, because I wanted to know, I know Jane does a lot of grants and stuff too, and I was just wanting to know.
Yeah.
Why is it that we're using him more for some of these grants, some of those grants Jane can't do?
Well, she does planning and zoning.
Right.
She is not, he's in Baton Rouge, okay? He does big stuff for us, and capital outlay is a whole different animal from writing a grant. That is totally, totally a different world.
That's what I want to know.
Yeah, good.
And he got a lot of contacts in that area.
Yes, to say the least.
All right. All right.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machine. Thank you. 6B.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2025-04, an ordinance amending the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances to provide for the sale of adjudicated properties and further providing with respect thereto and setting for public hearing on February 18th, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Whoa, that was quick, who is, uh?
Motion.
Okay, uh, Councilman David Merrill and I think Councilman Ron Davis, I just heard like one voice. Thank y'all very much. Uh, discussion on this, this is our ordinance that we're putting together to deal with our adjudicated properties a little differently. That's what we do. Oh, wanna defer it?
Uh, I'd rather defer it. Now, we could introduce it and just then kinda catch up with it. I have not revealed, I got it last week on Wednesday, and it's different from, it's kind of a different plan because before we talked about doing something in-city government that would do this, and now this would be hiring a contractor to do it.
Right.
So it's a little bit different, I'd like some time to look at it.
Would you mind if we introduce it, then put it on pause?
No.
And then we'll bring it back when you're comfortable.
We can do that, yeah, that's fine.
This is McKinley James, who is rewriting the work for us, who we actually probably, once we understand everything, will hire, uh, which will give us a new way to deal with those challenging hundreds of adjudicated properties that we have. McKinley's really cool, first time I'm in, I'm putting this guy to work. Uh, I think it's gonna be good, and it's gonna be a new way that we have a person who's not an employee but who gets paid per, per, you know, uh, I don't know, I guess per property.
Perplacement, I mean.
Perplacement, or, you know, how to put it?
Yeah.
But he would be an outside person, and, you know, we can't overload our staff anymore than we are. And unfortunately for a town our size, it's one of our challenges, we have a huge amount of adjudicated property. So this is a way, uh, he'll have time to cross over, some of our adjudicated property is complicated, there is city taxes owed, there's parish taxes owed. We can send McKinley to go work with the parish, you know, in other words, you're gonna have a person that I'm not tying up one of my employees or assistants or somebody trying to wrestle with this when you got a guy who already knows how to do it, and he's in turn. So that's kinda where we head, so.
He's a really sharp guy.
Oh, yeah.
He's got experience in Lafayette, he does real estate work, you know, um, I, I trust the guy.
Yep.
Um, but, you know, we'll have to work out some things with the parish because we've got some properties where we share the problem with them and some properties where we don't. So I'd like to take more time to look at it, but if you wanna introduce it.
Okay. I'd like to just introduce it so that when we bring it back, when Jeff's comfortable, we can move on it. Because I do, I'm excited about it, I mean, I think.
It'll be faster.
It's, it'll be faster than we, us doing nothing tonight.
And we gotta do something.
Yeah. We'll have to ask Jeff. Defer to when? I mean, do we need a date or we just don't have to have a date?
Well, we'd have to bring it up, we'd have to set a public hearing.
Correct, correct.
So are we setting a public hearing tonight?
Do we, well, I guess my question is, do we have to? Can we just introduce it and not set a public hearing, then come back and set a public?
I think you could, I think you could, yeah.
Because I mean, I'm not, it's not, it's not a big pressure thing, I just would like to keep working on it. And that way it shows him, we are, you know, moving toward some kind of partnership on this issue.
Okay.
Kind of question on it too.
Okay, I think, uh, Councilman Ron Davis had his hand first.
Um, just looking at the, uh, language or, uh, the information here, is this what Civic Source was doing for us?
Uh, kinda, yeah, kinda, no. In other words, Civic Source, if we can pull this off with a collection of ordinances and McKinley James and, and do what we do, and yes, it will be. Uh, we just got a little ways to have our own ordinances to be able to pull this off.
Okay, I, I'm just curious to see the difference, uh, if we reaching out for McKinley James and, uh, what's the difference between them and Civic Source?
Civic Source is very expensive. Civic Source is more money, we would attack some of the issues differently. Civic Source was good for us that we, a lot of low-hanging fruit got moved. It's not working for us anymore. In other words, what's happening now is the product that was good and there was a market for went. And went even though they had, you know, uh, big fees. Now we're in a position that we're not, we're not moving much property. It's got to a point in eight years, it's really slowed down. McKinley will have some different approaches, and because we have a person that we can go in a room and talk to, and he's working just for us on this, we can get creative with how we can move some of this property and do some things, I think, differently and kind of a more local hands-on, he's a local guy. So he knows people in our community, he's easy to work with. I think that he can move in ways that a big company like Civic Source can't move. And, and we need the help, we, we, we're gonna have to find a new way because we're not making a dent in it anymore. You know, when I got here, we started that and we did make a dent, we did move, you know, some properties. Never like I thought we would have, but, you know, it's, it's, we gotta develop a market for some of our product that we don't have, and I think McKinley might offer us that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we gotta do something different.
Yeah.
I agree. Because, you know, every meeting we have this announcement about the Civic Source and the adjudicated properties, and they're just not moving.
Yeah.
You know, so we gotta do something different. Civic Source is a large operation, they're all over the place. They're expensive for the people who want to acquire the property.
Yeah, and that's what I meant by expensive. Uh, it's, it's, you know, you're putting a burden on somebody to buy a piece of property that's, uh, you know, in some areas that they're not gonna have a lot of money to buy out.
Yeah.
You know, I wanna get rid of this blight next to me so I might buy it. Well, you know, when you add $5,000 of fees on top of what the purchase price is, you wonder why something doesn't move.
Correct. We're gonna have some fees to move this.
Yeah.
You know, but Lafayette pays fee, you know, they, they have a department, I guess, that does this, and, uh, it costs them a good bit of money to move their properties too, so.
Yeah, and there are times that I would be willing, I'm not, I can't do it without y'all. There are times on some of these properties, I'd be willing to give up what is owed on it in taxes, you know, to move it along. Can't do that all the time, but there are some that we could contribute, you know, maybe we could talk the parish into doing, that'd be one of McKinley's charges into saying, you know, it's better to get this back in use. We don't wanna represent empty lots, we don't wanna represent abandoned houses. Let's try something different that puts these back in, into commerce.
So.
Yes, sir, I think you still had the floor.
Okay, so in other words, we're still looking at the assessed value, the, uh, the, um, parish tax and city taxes. And, and then they will look at this and see if that's, uh, uh, we will evaluate to see if it's accessible to, uh, release the property for that amount, basically.
It could be that amount, it could be less than that amount.
Right, right.
You know. Yeah. Yeah, we gotta get creative in how we do in this, or we just gonna choke on these adjudicated properties and I'm losing citizens, you know? Or opportunity for increased citizens. Yes, sir, Councilman David Merrill.
Budget. Do we have a good budget for this? If we're gonna use him, are we okay as far as flexible for funds and maybe some of these fees we're talking about if we go that route?
We will have to amend the budget to do this.
That's what I wanna know.
But one step at a time, I need the tool first to be able to do it, and then I'll work on the budget. And, you know, he's cool. If I go to him and say, let's just do X amount, let's just say that we said we have $20,000 to spend this year, okay? And we come to the council, we do a budget amendment, and we have 20 grand, we, we, I can track that with him. I can turn the button off if I need to. If it works, then, and we're gonna get him over here, and I, and I'm gonna get him to show some, some success stories because that's the whole point of doing this, well, then the next year we might say, this is really good, you know, let's budget more. Uh, the other alternative we had thought about was an employee, okay? Maybe hire somebody else. Well, if you hire an employee and then you figure the overhead, you finish the benefits, you, you figure all of that, that's a lot more than what I want to start with.
Right.
And you can't really turn it off. You're not gonna hire an employee and bring somebody into our system and then in a year say, hey, this ain't working.
Right, right.
See you later.
And the reason I'm asked too, because we still have a lot of these adjudicated properties we've got to deal with.
Yeah.
And he's going to have his hands full.
And any adjudicated property that we move, we can take that money and we can keep funding him. I mean, there's more than one way. I do think we're going to come out of our general fund to start this, but if he succeeds, you know, he could, he could help pay his own tower.
Okay.
And the whole point is not to make money, it's to fix our community.
Right, 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 right.
And I know y'all all know that. I'm not preaching. I'm just saying, you know, that's what it is.
That's fine.
Anybody else?
Good.
Everybody good? And please vote your machines.
Uh, no. This is to, uh, table this until? This is to introduce.
We just, what we're doing is introducing, so we can vote yes to introduce.
All right.
And we'll just come back later.
We'll have to figure, we'll have to vote to have a public hearing.
You don't. We're going to come back and do it, uh, we'll have something to vote on later just for a public hearing. In other words, we're not in a hurry. So we vote this, it's introduced. If I'm right and my city term direct, oh, correct, if I'm not, we come back at a later date when Jeff says, hey, look, I've, I've looked at it all. It's all good. We put it on the agenda to vote for a.
Vote for it.
Just set a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Want to amend it to?
No, I'd rather introduce it.
What's the difference?
Okay.
Well.
But now with the introductions, Mayor, if I will, uh, and you went back and made a review on it, when we vote on it, it may be something different. It may, because you only introduced him, but there may be some changes.
Right, well then we'll bring it back again and we'll, we'll, you know, I guess we introducing it twice. Just humor me.
Maybe.
Yeah, humor me for a sec. So the next time that I bring it back, because you're counsel, look, you can change, remember that. There's nothing you can do, you can undo, and there's nothing you can't amend. So when we bring it back, I guess I'm bringing it back as another introduction with a public hearing. And, and my clerk is already saying I'm doing something twice that I don't have to do, but I would like to, since it was on the agenda, it doesn't hurt to introduce.
Do we need to amend?
Even if it's meaningless.
With a, with a, without the date?
I can't amend it right now because I don't know what the date.
No, well, to remove the public, the date for the public hearing?
Yes.
Have we, okay.
Yes, we would have to do that.
I'll move to.
Or we can just, if y'all want to, I didn't want to, but we could just grab the whole thing.
No, if you need to document them.
No, we ain't going to scrap that way.
Okay. All right, then I would need a motion to amend that we take.
To remove the public hearing date.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Troy Como, we, and we have a second by Councilman Brooke Markcott. Okay, now is everybody happy?
Yeah.
Well, kind of happy.
That'll keep you out of trouble.
No, keep me out of trouble. So we need to vote.
So the date's not on it.
We need to vote on the amendment. So if you would, please vote your machines. Thank you. So now we have an amended motion and we need to vote on the main motion. So I would need another motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion? We've already had a bunch of discussion. Any discussion? Everybody good? Then please vote your machine. Okay, thank you. And this item will be coming back. But I call McKinley tomorrow and tell him we, we trying to do something.
There you go.
That's all I need.
The hook is baited.
Oh, look, man, look, I gotta keep that. We gotta have that guy. I gotta keep him on. That's my man. Okay, item.
Seven A.
Discussion and action related to 626 East St. Peter Street, District Five, Resolution Number 25-06. Note, this item was deferred at the January 23rd, 2025 New Iberia City Council meeting.
Okay, we're going to have a lot of discussion, so I'd like to get the motion and second out the way. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Brooke Markcott and, uh, Councilman Ron Davis. Okay, thank y'all. Matt, talk to us.
All right, we have a revisiting of this discussion from last meeting and this is 626 East St. Peter.
Okay.
The, the pictures you see, you see here, I'm trying to show clockwise around the building, so it should be rotating. Give you a little visual there. Tree there.
Say two.
So this is a, um, second time we want to discuss this, uh, property. So I guess what we want to, the, the item, the, the reason we're discussing it is because it's up for demolition. So, um, what, we have Ms. Asma who has, uh, joined us tonight to speak a little bit about it, I guess, and, um, ultimately, we need to decide whether, what we're going to do with it. So.
Yes, sir.
Um, this thing has a history because we brought it up before the council and the council voted to demolish it and we moved forward. And I think Ms. Malome filed an appeal of that, so that's tied up in court right now. And we have, uh, the attorneys who defend us on that kind of thing who are, uh, involved in that lawsuit. And one of them suggested to us that, you know, if we could, since some work has been done, if we could work out an agreement with the landowner where the landowner would do certain things, we might be able to save this structure and end that litigation. So if we don't make a deal on this, then that litigation moves forward. I think eventually we're going to have the right to tear it down and we're going to tear it down and all that. But this is kind of an alternative to the court proceeding that we're in. And part of the reason the insurance company wants to do it is they want to save money because they're paying a lawyer to defend it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if we can save the building, I think it'd be a good thing to do. We brought it up at the last meeting, but I think the councilman, uh, Davis was not up to speed on it and hadn't had a chance to look at the building and talk to the landowner. So, uh, we have this coming up tonight. We don't have a deadline at this point. I know that the, uh, insurance company would like us to do something about this. We don't have a deadline, but it's brought up this evening to see if we can, if we can talk about it. Now, this, um, whether or not then agreement can be reached is going to depend on the, the work that needs to be done and the cost of the work that needs to be done and what agreements we can make to make sure that it gets done. So some of that has been discussed this week.
Yes.
And, uh, Councilman Davis said he may be prepared to continue those discussions. But, uh, you know, the coun, this council eventually has to decide what to do with it, um, one way or the other, not necessarily this evening.
Okay.
Well.
Councilman Davis?
Well, uh, myself, uh, and Mr., uh, Matt went and met with Ms. Asma, the, uh, client here, um, to discuss the matter. And, uh, we discussed in detail, uh, and pointed out a few things to her what needed to happen, uh, along with getting some estimates to, uh, make these repairs to refurbish this house. Uh, so I think she has that understanding and that if it's over half of the house, uh, the, the, the cost to repair, uh, is over half the, the value of the house that it has to be totally brought up to code, uh, including having the licensed contractors to be able to do this. And we take that estimate, if I'm, and y'all help me out if I'm wrong, uh, take that estimate and that's where you will obtain your permit, okay? Uh, but of course, as our attorney said, that we've been here a few times, uh, and we're looking to help you if at all possible. But of course, help is meeting us, uh, halfway or, uh, to the point of meeting our, uh, criteria, okay? So, uh, and you expressed to me as fellow, uh, to Mr. Matt, that you will do this work. And this is what we are expecting from you because, I mean, it was almost a done deal and we have a problem with blighted properties in, in the area. And we're trying to correct this, uh, for the betterment of the, the whole community, the city. So, uh, if you want to come up and plead your case, uh, we're, we're open for it right now.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Like I said before, I'm not here to fight nobody. I don't want to break no laws and nothing. I'm honest to God, I just wanted for, after all, in my retirement, I'm getting close to 60 and I want to fix that house, fix the other house. I mean, I know retirement's 65, but.
I'm, I'm just, those of us who are 60 are just chuckling about that.
Anyway, so I just want to, when I go back home to my country, I want to have a little income of here where I can generate. I'm not here to fight nobody. I want to fix that house. I really do. It's a solid, it's, I have recent pictures for the house, you know, I mean, they, I, they gave me two permit. They told me to demolish the, the building, the, the little building on the side that burned. Did not affect the house inside period, thank God, nothing, not even a smoke inside, just the back wall and some of it, not all of it, you know? So I'm, I want to fix it. But they gave me two permit, went to demolish, which is we did. And we put the debris, you know, we took care of that. And went to border it, which is I did. I border it. The side, there was an opening just now. There is a door, you remember the brown door? But they, it was open, we closed it and that was a done deal, but the rest is bordered. But I want to work on it. I don't want to leave it like that. I want you to, one day to pass by St. Peter and say, oh my God, we voted one day on this house to be demolished. I'm so proud of that Arab woman, what she did to that house. Look at it, how beautiful. That's what I want. I want to leave that impression behind. I want to leave that impression for y'all to say, oh my God, look, she did fix it. She kept her word and I will. I'm working right now, thank God. I got my little job with my daughter. I'm working, I came all the way. And by the way, everybody in, in Broadbridge spoke so highly of their parade. I swear to God, they, oh my God, it was like the biggest talk over there. Oh my God, y'all have the best people, the best mayor, you know, everybody. No fight, no nothing. So everything was perfect. I was so proud to be from New Iberia.
We are proud too. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So all what I'm asking just for, give me a chance to finish it. Now I have a job, I can do it. I just get a permit, you know, but that's all what I want. And that's what I believe in this country. I love it. I've been in America almost 40 years. I believe second chances. And if you give me that chance, I would really appreciate that. I want to fix that house. I want to, you know, I want to have my little income on that, please.
Thank you, Ms. Asma. Uh, we are, uh, depending on you to, uh, to your word.
Yes, sir.
That you will.
I will, I promise you.
Repair this. I've, uh, talked with most of the council members and asking them for support and allowing you to do this.
Yes.
So, uh, we would try to, uh, we would like to get some updates as this progress to show that we're moving forward.
Sure.
Uh, that permit, if I believe, is maybe good for a, a period of time, but we'd like to get some updates because this has been such a problem. And we want to put it to rest and we want to set a, a, a good precedence going forward with the other blighted properties.
Yes, sir.
So I hope you do understand where we're coming from.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, uh, does anyone else have anything to say?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to know what she's going to do.
Yeah.
And we need to know by when. And, you know, we need to put that in black and white. Um, you know, I don't think we need elaborate contract with her, but, you know, we need to have an estimate of the work that needs to be done by her so she can meet the standards that our inspection department's going to require her to meet.
Yes.
And then we have to have some kind of schedule. Um, you know, one thing we have talked about is a bond, just to a performance bond. That's going to be difficult for an individual to get.
Yes.
It will. So maybe, you know, maybe that's not possible, but, you know, we got to have some kind of objective thing that we can look at to say, okay, this is what everybody's agreed and this is the deadline for doing it. So that if it doesn't get done, then, um, you know, we're going to, we're just going to proceed with a demolition. I mean, that's all we can do. So I don't think we have the information for this meeting to spell that out, but I hope by maybe next meeting.
Okay.
We could have an agreement. We could say, this is the estimate, this is what needs to be done and this is the deadline for doing it. Now, I don't know how long it would take, but, you know, we need something realistic but firm. Um, I think everybody wants to save this house if we can.
Yes, sir, please.
But we spent an awful lot of time talking about things that, you know, haven't been done, so.
I remember Mr. Mayor in the beginning, he said, we're not here to demolish.
It's true.
No, we're not.
We're here to help people. So I'm just seeking for that chance, please.
No, no, but, but we need to.
And I'm going to make you proud one day. You're going to see.
But we need something specific. We need something, you know, with a, with a, um, you know, a schedule work and, um, and you need to know what it is we expect because, you know, this could be too much to take on. I just don't know. I have no idea. I mean, I've walked around the thing, you know, I've walked around the four sides of it several times over the months, but, um, it's a big project. So I think maybe by next time we could have that and, and bring it before the council and the council could say, okay, this work on this schedule or else.
Yeah, if she came back with an estimate in two weeks and then maybe we gave her 30 days to have some progress.
Yeah, correct.
You know, then, that's just a thought. I mean, I'm going to, going to bow to you, it's your, your district, but that to me would be some milestones.
We meet here again on the 18th, I believe, of February, which is two weeks from today.
Okay.
So those estimates that we talked about.
Uh-huh.
We would, we would like to have that for this meeting.
Okay.
And then, uh, the work should begin, uh, because you're going to need that to get your permit anyway. After you present that information, then we should be able to get the permit.
Yes.
And then we start looking for some progress. If you can bring us some pictures, we meet twice a month.
Yes, that's what I thought.
If we did February 18th for an estimate, we could do May 18th for some results.
Correct.
March, I'm sorry, March.
March.
March 18th.
And it'd be nice to have the estimates before the 18th. Yes. So we can have something spelling them out so we don't have a big discussion at the meeting.
Yes, sir.
You know, that'll be worked out ahead of time.
Do you understand what he's asking?
Yeah.
The estimates, okay. I asked for them, uh, when we met to have them for this meeting.
Yes.
I know it was a short notice, but we'd like to have them before the next meeting so we know what to, uh, expect. And we could even probably have you permit for you, I guess, you know, but.
Is it the same estimate I sent you or?
I'm sorry?
Is it the same estimate I sent you or different?
Well, I, I hadn't seen that estimate, but, uh, we're talking about the licensed contractor with the electrician and all these different people because we've already looked at, uh, we talked about it was going to be over the assessed value.
Okay.
So everything needs to be done and brought up to speed.
Definitely.
And I don't think we ought to grant a permit until we have a deal because we don't want to give her permission to move forward.
Yeah.
On something we're not going to let her move forward on. So. Okay, we just, you just, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I think, I think the permit, the, the estimate is important because the, the only thing that, that our picture would be worse than where we are today is if she spent a considerable amount of money and then she can't reach the goal in the deadline and then we end up tearing it down.
I will, I will, I promise.
So you'd be throwing good money after bad. And, uh, as I expressed to several of the other council members, we surely want you to have every opportunity to do what you can.
Yes, sir.
But we also have to respect the neighbors who are concerned about the property and their quality of life as well.
Definitely.
And if, if you do that and wherever you're living, we want to respect your quality of life with your neighbors as well.
Absolutely.
So it's not anything against any one person, but it's to protect, protect the majority of the people in, in the area.
Yes, sir.
I wish you well.
I'm planning on, like I told you, when they're going to pass by and say, oh my God, she did it.
I wish you well.
It worked.
Well. I want to say something too on it. I've, I've, I've witnessed knowing you, you lived on, uh, Evangelist Street at one time.
Yes.
And, uh, I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm on board with it, whatever they want to do to help you.
Yes, sir.
You know, but I just want to make sure like they're saying that you can afford to be able to make that move to be able to go to this next level, you know? And, uh, do you think you'll be able to do that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my boys, they're in the army and they're helping me with town.
Yeah, I think if you can have that information and, and have it for the next meeting, I think our lawyer and Ron and everybody else probably be willing to, to go forward to help you out, you know?
Yes, really, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, uh, Ms. Asma.
You're welcome.
And as you see, they were willing to work with you. Uh, but at one point that both constables put forth is that they wouldn't want you to, uh, put your money into it and don't complete the project.
Oh, no, I will, I will.
But then that would be money wasted, okay? But we would like to have this residence, uh, and somebody in it, you know, as soon as possible.
Yes, sir, definitely, absolutely.
Thank you.
I want to say if you were, sorry.
Yes, oh, sure.
Ms. Asma-
Councilman Markcott.
Every time you have come up here, you've been so kind to us, very sweet. And so, I want nothing more than to see that, pass by it and it's a completely brand-new house. That'd be amazing to see, especially on that main street right there, yep. Uh, I know your neighbors would like to see it even more.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Just remember those neighbors. They have to live across from the vacant house that has random people going in and out of it.
I told a couple of them and I told them if you see anybody, which is, thank God, no homeless, nobody, because-
Right, right.
...and everything, they tell, whenever, if anybody, they either take them out or they call me or they call my son-in-law.
Yeah.
And I pass every day, every day, coming from-
Yeah, they shouldn't have to worry about doing that, though. It should be nice and closed up and they shouldn't have to worry about looking over their shoulder to see if there's somebody hanging out on the vacant lot there and trashing it because they dump a lot of trash there, too.
I know, and I keep cleaning, I keep having people and go pay them and clean, just I want to keep it clean and-
Okay.
Even my other properties in town, I have, I signed with a couple of people, they cut the grass, they're cleaning everything up today, thank God, you know, I don't have no problem. When I go home, I want to be west, when I go home.
I want to see you succeed, I really do. I really want this to happen for you.
Somebody told me, which is, I'm not gonna say his name, he told me one day they're gonna come visit my feet and crawl to my feet begging me for a hundred dollar, ten dollar to, for food. What I said, "No, that, I will never come for it."
Oh, well, where's that?
I never do that. I knew that was coming.
I would never do that, I'm gonna stand on my, if I hit down, I'm gonna bounce right out.
I really hope you can make this work for the neighbors' sake. I'm concerned about them right now, too.
I'm so proud of my two boys, they're one of them on station and, you know, Virginia and the other one, Mississippi in the army, you know, and they helping me on that, that's why, that's what gave me that encouragement. They said, "Mama, go for it, we're gonna help you."
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever money they make.
I'm gonna follow Mr. Ron's lead.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for success.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so to clean, to clean our night up on this item, we're gonna need a motion because what we have, we had a motion to second, but we're not going to that direction. So, we're gonna need to amend the motion that for February eighteenth, we have an estimate and that for March eighteenth, we have our first report on progress.
Yes.
With the fact that they meet the requirements, that the scope, then we get a permit, you know, we have other steps.
Yes.
We're not, we're not releasing her to get a permit and get started, but, but we need to set some, this would set some dates.
Okay, well, I, I'll make that motion that we'll come back on the eighteenth with the information and, uh, then we'll make a decision, uh, to, to move forward.
Okay, because we could add to it that if it meets it and a permit is issued, then we, then she has to come back and give us a report on March the eighteenth.
Yes.
Okay, and if, if it meets it, then move forward.
Oh, you, you're saying that it would be on the agenda and you wouldn't have had, had it to look at it yet?
I'm just asking for myself.
Yeah, I think it would be on the eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion before we, is there any discussion on that?
Is this a motion to a man?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a motion to amend. Okay, so I have a, a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Councilman David Merrill. So, I have a first and a second. Is any discussion on this amendment? Anything we forgot? Are we good?
I think we're good.
Okay, then please vote your machines to amend. Okay, now we have an amended motion, so I need a motion on it. Councilman Ron Davis?
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, any discussion? Seeing none, then vote your machines. Now we got it. Good, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
I hope it turns out to be a success.
All right, uh, seven B.
Resolution number twenty-five oh-nine, a resolution declaring the buildings or structures located at sixteen oh-eight Elm Street, District Three, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on March fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. And I'll open it up for that and then discussion.
Well, with this item, this is sixteen oh-eight Elm Street. This has been a sore, uh, subject, I guess, or sore property for a while now, so, um-
Do you have photos?
Was that?
Photos?
I did.
You have some on Elm Street?
Did we have any? So, this, this item is, um, it's actually in the grant program, I believe, and we're waiting-
Yeah, we are taking a two-pronged approach on this property. So, it's in the grant program, we're not positive when that's gonna come through. We are taking the first step to introduce it here. Yes, sir?
I was giving the history of it.
Okay, great.
Um, this thing has been in bad shape for a long time. There was a member of the family who lived there for many years, who now no longer lives on the property. The city was reluctant to take action to evict a person out of their house, especially in this situation, so we didn't. But the house is in terrible shape, the, um, the resident has moved out, the meter's been pulled. I don't think anybody's ever gonna be there again. The, um, we have threatened them with eviction. We've communicated over the last few months with, um, this family member who's now in charge of her mother's estate, which actually owns a house, through their attorney and we got them to sign an agreement like we had signed for the demolition grant, uh, properties. So, they have agreed to let us tear this down. But by the same token, you know, we think the grant program's gonna come through, we think that's gonna happen, but we'd like to also, at the same time that we have this grant program, go ahead and, um, have this thing declared, um, subject to demolition so that we could move forward with that if the first program bog, bogs down. Because we need to do something on this property. So, you know, I, I think it's fine to have a hearing in a month if you want to do that. It's not a public hearing, it's just public, it's not a public hearing, it's a hearing for the landowner to come tell us what she wants to do. And, um, and I can communicate that with Kay Clark, who's the attorney for the estate, so we can tell her that we're just doing this, it's kind of belting suspenders, but we want to, one way or another, take action on this property. Our preferred thing, and if we will do this if we can, subject to the agreement that we've signed with them, uh, our preferred thing is to tear this down under the grant program.
Definitely.
Because that's not a con, it's not a adversary process, there's no appeals, they agreed to it, it's faster, but we gotta get the money to do it.
And that process right now, we had to do all of the asbestos environmental testing, that's been done. That's been turned over to the state. Once the state approves that, then we're gonna get the go-ahead to begin demolitions. So, we're just waiting with our grant consultant. This one is Thomas McGee, uh, grant consultant, who we've used on a couple of projects. As we said, Mr. Menville used to do all our projects, he's kind of scaled back on some of these large that, and I understand why. He said, "I don't want to do the grants, it'd take two years to see them happen." We're, we're in that rut right now. But as soon as we get the environmental approval, we can start tearing houses down. But again, if that doesn't happen soon, I, I, we, we're, we're starting to look and hedging our bet with a backup plan. Yes, sir.
I'll just say, um, this would make Mr. Broussard very happy to have this behind us. He still, it reminds me, uh, to press on, on this property. And the, the neighbors are having-
Two of them were here earlier.
Yeah, they were. And they, um, their quality of life is not what, what it could be because of the property.
We can share with everybody, we had a meeting with the neighborhood this week in my office, it went well. I think they understand we're taking two different paths, uh, to try to, you know, address this issue.
It, it's beyond repair.
It is.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, we're not saying-
The roof's caving in, there's mold in the house and there's critters everywhere.
No electric service and not- Not capable of putting one back because it's in such bad shape.
No, it's been in bad shape for a long time.
Yep.
And it's not a small thing, it's a big house, it's gonna be a project.
Yep.
It's on a double lot.
Yep.
Is there somebody, you know, security-wise, making sure nobody don't go on this property, nothing like that? Because the way it look-
I mean, the neighbors call and, uh, you know, the police will go if they need to, but it's-
It's, it's horrible, I'm telling you, somebody can get hurt on there or-
It's not even able to be boarded up.
Yeah, you know?
We might risk the PD getting hurt if they go out there.
They can't clear that house. The roof's caving in.
To me, I think she, you know, until they, whenever we find out, they should put some type of thing around it, you know, where they know somebody-
Hoping we move quickly, you know? I'm hoping we move quickly. I, I, I understand, but I'm hoping we can move, it's been such a, a fight. I'm hoping to just move as quickly as we can and tear it down.
Yeah, sooner the better.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Did we do a motion to second?
Yes, we did.
Then if everybody's good, please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you very much.
And, yeah, the hearing's not really a public hearing, so-
Right. Okay, well, now we move on to councilman's remarks. Uh, I'm gonna start with Councilman Ron Davis tonight.
Well, uh, this one's been pretty interesting, uh, being that it's been, uh, worked on for so long and then, uh, talking with, uh, a young lady, uh, it sounds like she's committed and I'm hoping that we can get a resolution where this is, uh, a success, a success story, um, you know, for the record. I would, I, I just hate to see them torn down when somebody could be living in it. But of course, it all takes money. And, uh, I do appreciate y'all's support on supporting me, uh, with this. And like I said, I hope it's not in vain, you know? And with the, um, grant program for demolitions, I've seen that there's a couple that's been torn down in my district, you know, uh, and this is good. Uh, and I guess we'll be, uh, having that out there on the market fairly soon.
I'm hoping that, you know, as soon as the state says I can go, we will.
Yes, but anyhow, thank y'all much.
Thank you. Sir?
Okay, uh, I want to remind everybody to, Neighborhood Watch Meeting is gonna be on the twentieth, two days after the next meeting that we have. And hopefully, the mayor and also, uh, Chief Todd Deppor will be there to give some people some information on different things that, uh, that's going on in the community. And mayor, to be able to give some people some things on what we're looking at and, uh, some of the things that we might have going forward coming into this year. And, uh, other than that, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, I just wanted to publicly-
Quick tonight, we got a few people-
I know it is, yes. I want to publicly thank, uh, the Bayou Mardi Gras Association for putting on the Mardi Gras Parade because like we all said earlier, it was a really amazing turnout, tons of floats in the parade, uh, dance teams. It was a lot and it was, it was really good, no issues, uh, NIPD was very present and, um, I, I don't recall hearing of anything bad happening, which is great. Um, so it looked really good for the city and everyone did a great job. Uh, also, don't forget to sign those kids up for, uh, Evangelist League, baseball and softball, that's going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the PD, uh, you know, the FARP Department had a good presence in the parade. We used the new million-dollar ladder truck and I think people got a big kick out of that, um, you know-
Horns work, the horns work, had the sirens work.
And, and wait, the loudspeaker because Joe Foray was driving it and he was like making one side cheer against the other side of the street, I mean, he was into it. Uh, that was fun. Um, but you know, Public Works had a huge challenge on its hands, this was the biggest parade ever. Uh, Joe was shark two people that night, that evening for some reason and, I mean, they pulled it together. So, uh, you know, it's a community effort. Having a Mardi Gras Association who wants to fund the bill to, to do this is, is, is just awesome. But the community showing up, uh, the support from the surrounding communities and, you know, they've planned this. We are the first Mardi Gras parade in Acadiana every year. And so, people really have caught on to that and I think that's one of the things that, you know, Mardi Gras started, let's roll, they coming. But that is a good thing, but it ha, it is and will continue to become a challenge for us because I think it's gonna be, you know, a bigger and bigger event. But anyway, I do want to just thank everybody involved, I'm sure I miss some people, but, uh, it is fun to watch the city come together and all my departments work, uh, you know, to make this happen and the community, you know, benefit from it and participate in it. So, thank you for that. Our next meeting is February the eighteenth and, what's that? Oh, yeah, and we have a stormwater survey that, uh, MS4 Stormwater, it's a requirement that we have to advertise this every once in a while. But if someone wants to participate in the stormwater survey, you can go to the cityinibria.com under Public Works section and, uh, take the survey. Um, I do say every once in a while that through Civic Source, we have adjudicated properties for sale. Uh, you can go to civicsource.com and at some point I'll be pushing our new program. That's it, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Done.